I see that.
You did good.
The Muscatine City Council will come to order. We'll begin this evening with a roll call, Fran.
Councilmembers Lorette.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Natvig.
Present.
Shahadi.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Fred.
Present.
I'll present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Fran. Folks, would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. If there is anyone in council chambers that wishes to address the council about an item or an issue that isn't included on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to come to the podium. Tell us your name and address, please. Very good. Moving along, item five, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda which includes items six A, items eight A through E, item nine A, filing of communications, which is twelve A and B, and tonight's bills, which total one million, two hundred thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents?
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Bob.
Second.
Second by Mark. Any discussion, council? The voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Six, zero, seventy. Okay. I would also include in the consent agenda and congratulations to Mr. Brian Wright, who has been appointed to the Art Center Board of Trustees. Moving along to item seven A, which is proposed fair increase for the JARC Muscatine to Wilton service. This public hearing concerns the proposed fair increase for the JARC Muscatine to Wilton service. The current fare for this service is one dollar per ride, and it is being proposed that the fee be increased to two dollars per ride. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close.
Motion by Osama.
Second.
Close. Second. Tom. Voice vote, folks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, seven, zero. Let's see. Item eleven from the city administrator, eleven A, a resolution approving fair increase for the JARC Muscatine to Wilton service. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the fair increase for the JARC Muscatine to Wilton service from one dollar to two dollars?
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Tom. Second by Jeanette. Any discussion, council?
What is the actual cost? Is there a... Do we have an actual cost per rider for that making that trip? Because even two dollars doesn't seem like that would...
Good evening, Christie.
Good evening. Cost per ride for the most recent fiscal year, 2011, we don't have the current fourth-quarter things, was eleven dollars and eighty-eight cents per ride.
Okay. So the rest of that is subsidized by the federal government and our grant.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Your Honor, just a further... So, we're breaking even if we charge two dollars?
Well, perhaps you remember the discussion five or six months ago. This bus originally was funded in 2009 under ICAP funding, which is Iowa Clean Air Attainment Program. And there was a pile of operating money that was included with the purchase price of the bus. We have now exhausted that money. So up until this point, we were fully federally funded, just about through fourth quarter of this year, actually. There's not enough money there to cover fourth quarter. The city's going to end up covering half. So the discussion was if we raise the rate, double the rate, people will still ride at two dollars a ride. It's still only twenty bucks a week for them... No. Yeah, twenty bucks a week for them to get to and from work. The city will still be pitching in a fair amount, though, fifty percent, because JARC money is only funded at fifty percent. So not the hundred percent that ICAP was. And ICAP operating money was available initially, but that's not something I can apply for under operating funds. And JARC is Job Access Reverse Commute. We're primarily taking people to CDS, so it was the natural fit.
So we're taking Muscatine residents to Wilton?
All Muscatine residents. We do bring Wilton residents back on the return trip. The CDS people have to be at work by seven in the morning, so we travel around the city, pick them up, get them to work at CDS by seven o'clock. We pick up a dialysis patient every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, take him to University of Iowa Hospitals and Clinics out on Mulberry. And then a few other folks will ride, sometimes members of the general public, to come to shop for a day or whatever. But it's primarily those citizens, those residents of Muscatine, that work at CDS and travel to and fro every day.
So I guess we have some decisions to make going forward on how we're going to approach this.
Yep. Your decision. That's right. That's right.
When will the two dollars per ride start, if indeed that we pass it tonight?
If indeed it's passed tonight, it will begin on Monday.
Okay. Have the public been informed that there might be a possibility?
They have. So when it was in the paper, two or three weeks ago, I sent the notice with the driver. So every passenger received notice of it and a written document. And then yesterday, I wrote on the bus to remind them that tonight was the public hearing, that it was their opportunity to speak for or against it. And they all mentioned that they were not opposed to a fair increase. They knew they couldn't drive to and from work for twenty dollars a week.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Anyone else, council?
No.
Okay. This is a roll call vote. Thank you, Christie. Roll call vote, beginning with Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
And Mark.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven, zero. Item B, presented for city council's consideration, is a resolution approving the contract and bond for the tree obstruction removal project at the municipal airport. On June seventh, 2012, city council awarded the contract for this project to Dickey Farms Escavating in the amount of forty-three thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-two cents. The project will include the clearing and grubbing of trees and shrubs on approximately thirty-three acres of airport property, installation of approximately three thousand, seven hundred and eighty linear feet of silt fencing, seeding, traffic control, and mobilization. The project will be paid through ninety percent federal funding and a ten percent local share. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Scott.
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Osama. Discussion, council. Also, a roll call vote, beginning with Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
And Osama.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven, zero. Item C, presented for city council's consideration, is a resolution accepting an acquisition agreement for the Harrison Street Extension Project. The Muscatine Community School District has requested the construction of a drop-off lane for students attending Colorado School. The acquisition of additional land will allow for the alignment of the drop-off driveways and greatly improve vehicle movement and safety. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
That would be Jeanette. Second, anyone?
Second.
Second. Tom. Any discussion, council? Also, a roll call vote, beginning with Jeanette.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
And Tom.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven, zero. Item D, presented for city council's consideration, is a resolution releasing a real estate mortgage for twenty-three thirteen Isit Avenue. The property owners purchased the home, which was part of the Muscatine Municipal Housing Agency's HUD Ownership Program in 1996. As a part of the program, they entered into a promissory note with the city of Muscatine in the amount of twenty-three thousand dollars. The mortgage was in the form of a forgivable loan with a seven-year repayment provision. All provisions of this mortgage and promissory note were satisfied on November seventh, 2003. It is staff's recommendation that city council take action at this time to release the mortgage for twenty-three thirteen Isit Avenue. Is there a motion to approve, to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
That would be Bob. And a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second, Osama. Any discussion, council? A roll call vote, beginning with Bob.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
And Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
And Jeanette.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven, zero. Item E, presented for city council's consideration, is a resolution approving the contract and bond for the Bond and Schley Pumping Stations renovation project. On July nineteenth, 2012, city council awarded the contract for this project to high-brand industrial contractors in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, three-hundred dollars. In addition to the contract amount, there are engineering costs totaling twenty-three thousand, five-hundred dollars, and piping and fitting costs for the Bond lift station totaling fourteen thousand, four-hundred and twenty-seven dollars. This brings the total project cost to three-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. There is three-hundred thousand dollars budgeted for this project. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
I heard someone, Mark, was that you? And a second, Bob. Any discussion, council? So roll call vote, beginning with Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
And Phil.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven, zero. Item F, presented for city council's consideration, is a request from the Water Pollution Control Plant to accept the low bid for a new lab and/or pretreatment truck. These three bids were received with a low bid from Krueger Motor Company in the amount of twenty thousand and fifteen dollars. There is twenty-one thousand dollars budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
So moved, Your Honor.
Was that you, Mark?
No, it's me.
Phil, okay. And a second, Tom, I believe. Okay. Any discussion, council? This is a voiced vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, seven, zero. Item G, presented for city council's consideration, is a request to approve the bid for painting of the effluent clarifier at the Water Pollution Control Plant. Six bids were received for this project with a low bid from Tyrion Sons in the amount of seventy-six thousand, nine-hundred and fifty-two dollars, which is eleven thousand, nine-hundred and fifty-two dollars over the budgeted amount of sixty-five thousand dollars. Money is available from reserves to complete this project. However, leftover utility money should keep the department from going over its 2012, 2013 budget requests. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
That would be Phil. And a second?
Second.
Second, Scott. Discussion, council.
Well, I'm going to take advantage with Mr. Kirby here. I'm going to ask, is it a twenty million dollar question maybe now, by now? How much did we spend down there and when it's going to stop, Roger? Sorry. Put you on the spot, but I think probably... I know it's one of our... You mentioned of our in-depth meeting, we're going to have an update on the water pollution control, probably down the road sometime, to see where we stand, because we already passed the deadline, and the extension was up to August or September, was it?
I'll let Roger... I don't remember if it's August or September. We have a meeting next week with the engineer and city staff and the city attorney to discuss partial resolution of some of the outstanding issues that we talked about previously.
Yeah. We just basically have one aspect of our project left, and that's the effluent pumps. And that's... The pumps have been ordered now, and we're in the process, and they should be in the process of being manufactured and completed in October. They're telling us now, or first part of November, but that will complete... Contractor has not been around for the last six, eight months, because there's nothing to do until we get these pumps here and get that finished up, so... That whole project should be in... And we're still within budget of that project itself. This is stuff that we budgeted for afterwards, and really, the painting of these clarifiers itself came about because of the change we made in the past. We did not have to disinfect our effluent coming out, and under the new permit, we had to start disinfecting. The old days, they used to use chlorine, and a lot of places still use chlorine to disinfect, but the new technology is using UV for disinfection. So that was part of the project, and when we added that into the whole system, and we have to... During the summer months, we have to run the UV disinfection. We've always had an algae problem coming off the final clarifiers, but now it's coming to the UV units, and they just don't work very well with all this algae going through it. It doesn't do the job. It doesn't kill everything that needs to be... That needs to kill, so... That's the main reason for painting these clarifiers. It just... It basically makes everything slippery, and it won't let algae hang up. We have to go out manually and clean the algae off of the clarifier arms and the concrete and everything right now, the weirs themselves. This should help tremendously to not have any algae even accumulate and keep it moving. So this was budgeted separately from the project itself, and we still should stay fairly close. We may go over a little bit on the original project of where we were at and those costs, but we want to get things finished up, and as Greg said, we're having a meeting next week with the engineers and get this finalized here pretty quick of what they're going to pay for and what we're going to pay for, and get those things taken care of. But we'll bring all that information back to you before we make any decisions ourselves.
That's fair. The only concern I have is that I know it's two different projects, the capital investment in the project and all this other stuff that we're having, and I noticed that some of these projects, they are coming over budget, and my only concern is I don't want to come to January or February and increase any fees due to the fact that we are approving all these. I understand you're still within the budget here for this year, but however, I mean, I don't think it would be fair here, because I understand it's enterprise fund, it should support itself here. But I... We don't want to be surprised when budget comes here that we need to increase our fees just to offset that.
At this point, we're trying to watch that very closely, and I... We don't anticipate anything like that taking place.
And the project that was over, we'll be doing value engineering to bring those costs down back within budget, and if not, we've reserved the purchase of the lift station truck. We've pushed that off until such time as we make sure that we're under budget in that other project. Just a reminder, though, it will be time to be looking at a rate study. We're in the final year of the...
Next June thirtieth.
Of the last rate... The last rate increase that was done about five, six years ago, I believe.
Yes, it was done before I came... So it's about six years...
Six years ago.
It was set up through June thirtieth.
So it'll be time to take another look at that. I'm not saying that's an increase-decrease. That's neutral. It's just time to look at it. But it won't... It will not be related to this project.
Appreciate it. And this really, once we get this done, we feel that we've got things pretty well on level ground. We're always hoping that things can come up, but... I was just going to ask, Roger, didn't all those other punch list items that we talked about at your last update, those have all been complete then? I mean, you had some... Most of them have been completed, but the contractor, since he's not on site and not... I mean, it's not that many or large enough items for him to come back and spend a whole crew and whatever. They have to come back and install these pumps once we get those, and they want to do that in a week's time, come in here for one full week and do everything and get it done, but...
Okay.
There's not anything but minor items besides a pump changeout, so...
Thank you, Roger. Thank you.
Any more discussion, council? Okay, this is a voiced vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion carries, seven, zero. Item H, presented for city council's consideration, is a request to approve the purchase of a one-ton truck for refuse collection. Five bids were received for this purchase. The bid submitted by Carl Chevrolet was not the lowest bid submitted, however, it met all of the city's specifications. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation the bid from Carl Chevrolet in the amount of thirty-one thousand, six-hundred and twenty-two dollars for a one-ton truck be approved. There is thirty-five thousand dollars budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Motion by Mark.
Second.
Second by Scott. Council discussion. No discussion. This is a voiced vote. Those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion carries, seven, zero. Item I, presented for city council's consideration, is a request to place a stop sign on Harrison Street at Bandag Drive. With the completion of the Harrison Street Extension Project, the primary drop-off and pickup location for students at Colorado Elementary School will be on Harrison Street. Since traffic is expected to be heavy during the beginning and ending of the school day, certain traffic control measures are necessary to ensure the safe flow of vehicles. It is the Traffic Committee's recommendation a stop sign be placed on Harrison Street where it intersects with Bandag Drive. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Bob.
Second.
Second by Jeanette. Discussion, council? This is a voiced vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, seven, zero. Item J, presented for city council's consideration, is a request to approve a pre-annexation agreement with Ripley Development Corporation and Ripley's Incorporated. In 2009, the city voluntarily annexed two parcels of property referred to as the Bermal-Ripley property. As a part of the pre-annexation agreement with the owners, the city agreed to assist the owners in their efforts to extend sanitary sewer to serve the Ripley's Mobile Home Park. Evaluations have taken place concerning the construction of a forced main sewer or the installation of a gravity sewer that would serve a larger area. A gravity sewer would require less maintenance, and costs would be comparable to a forced main sewer. As stipulated in the proposal... The proposed pre-annexation agreement, the design and installation costs will be paid through a one-time upfront payment by Ripley's in the amount of four-hundred thousand dollars. The remaining cost for the sewer will be paid through a variety of fees, including the development of a benefit district that will require future connections to pay a fee based... A fee based on the acreage served, taxes generated by the voluntary annexation of Ripley's to the city, additional road use taxes generated by the increase in population, and the donation of easement necessary to build the sewer. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Tom.
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Osama. Any discussion, council? Also, a voiced vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion carries, seven, zero. Item K, presented for city council's consideration, is a request to approve the city's deer hunt, which begins September fifteenth, 2012, and ends January twentieth, 2013. The city has been participating in a citywide deer hunt program under the guidance of the Iowa Department of Natural Resources since the 2006, 2007 deer hunting season. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Mark, that was you. And a second?
Second.
Second, Scott. Discussion, council? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion carries, seven, zero. Item L, presented for city council's consideration, is a request to approve an amendment to the City Hall Boiler Replacement Agreement. In 2011, four of the ten modular heating boilers were replaced at the Clark House. The funding is now in place for the replacement of the six remaining boilers. Staff is recommending AJ Associates provide an engineering plan for replacement of the remaining boilers. They have provided a proposal of five thousand, six hundred dollars for this service. There is thirty-seven thousand dollars budgeted for this project. The city has an agreement with AJ Associates for the City Hall Boiler Replacement Project, and staff is recommending the agreement be amended to include the replacement of the six remaining boilers at the Clark House. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
That was Phil. And a second?
Second.
Second, Jeanette. Discussion, council? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion carries, seven, zero. Item M, which is a request to approve proposal for city council's goal-setting session, is there a motion to approve the proposal for the city council's goal-setting session?
Your Honor, just a couple comments beforehand?
Sure.
Great. The city has in the past used Tim Shields, an outside facilitator, third party, to facilitate goal-setting sessions with city council. I've worked with Tim Shields myself, and those were, I think, very productive sessions having that third party come in. Tim Shields is obviously not available any longer. Passed away a few years back. He worked with the Institute of Public Affairs at the University of Iowa. I did some digging around, and the gentleman in the council packet came highly regarded from several cities, Bettendorf, Ankeny, and Dubuque, to name just a couple. So my question to the city council is, one, should we proceed along the same lines that we have for the past several years, where we have a staff review of the goals, bring back recommendations to the council? We have typically a Saturday or an evening work session with the city council to discuss those goals and any other goals or items that the city council would like to bring forward. We can do that, or we can look to bringing in a third party to help facilitate that. We can do that now. We can wait and have that discussion during budget and continue with the normal process this year. I wanted to provide the city council with some options going forward. So, you know, a couple options. We can stay the course, talk about it at budget, or we can do something a little different now. So up to the city council.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to table it for budget sessions. I think this is something that we should have a better idea of how this would fit in with the other tools we have, like the National Citizen Survey that we just did. We're just doing comprehensive planning sessions. We're getting input from that, and is there going to be a return on it? You know, what's the return on investment going to be? We should have a better handle on that. And if we're going to spend that money, I think it should be budgeted.
Second.
Counsel, there's a motion on the floor?
Second.
And a second by Tom. Any discussion?
So the money...
Additional discussion?
The money that would be expended here is not currently budgeted, correct?
Correct. That's right. I'll simply bring it back as part of that budget proposal for discussion. There's no real motion needed to table it, it's just, it'll be brought back at budget. And I'll be looking to set some dates in September and October, or October, based on everybody's schedules, to probably have a Saturday work session to, after I meet with staff, so...
Do we have to table that motion to get it off the agenda?
Nope. No actions required.
Okay. No action, it is. Okay, moving along to item 14, communications, beginning with Councilman Lorette.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Phil?
Nothing at all, tonight.
I have nothing, thank you, Mayor.
Osama?
I have nothing, thank you.
Bob?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Jeanette?
Nothing, Your Honor.
And Tom?
Just one quick item, during the course of the summer construction, we put a temporary stop sign at the corner of Eighth and Cypress, and I've had actually some favorable feedback to making that permanent. So what I would like to see happen is, perhaps the Traffic Committee could review the matter and just give us a recommendation? If that's possible?
Absolutely. Thank you.
On to Greg.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
And Fran?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Well, I just have one comment. I'd like to, again, congratulate Councilman Bynum on celebrating a birthday earlier this week, so happy birthday, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor.
Happy birthday.
Old enough, Mayor.
Your Honor, I apologize, I do have one item, a late item, if we could, Friendly Theaters is going to be looking, or Solzberger specifically, will be looking to close Mulberry April, oh, April, August 13th? Tentatively for August 13th, from, you know, they're expecting a 68-hour closure. You know, we will not be meeting before the, before that happens.
You say a 68-hour closure?
Six to eight.
Six to eight.
Hour closure on Mulberry. We'd like to see, if the council is willing to approve that tonight, pending the receipt of all of the required information from Solzberger to the city staff and notification to the adjacent property owners.
But during that period, emergency vehicles will be allowed to serve the citizen in that area as well?
Oh, absolutely. They need to work with the adjacent property owners, the filling station, the gas station, the apartments, and obviously, emergency responders to coordinate that effort. And that's part of the requirements before closure, so...
Thank you.
So I'd ask the city council...
Randy has.
Go ahead. Absolutely.
Just a point of clarification, it's not going to be a six to eight hour closure. It's going to be probably all week, and from 13th through the 17th. They have to put in a, what is it, a 16-foot deep, 10-foot wide trench to run a sewer through. They have to also put a water line in, and Solzberger's have been put on notice, or the contractor, that we want this road passable by the 20th is when school starts. And so that is, that's the timetable they've been given. Now, they've worked pretty diligently today to get notification, they've notified the business owners, and we have that in writing. They put together a traffic plan. They still need to contact DOT because of the impact it has on the bypass. I'm not sure the city engineer, I think, has one or two other things that they're going to be required to do. But we will not be meeting again as a council until, when the 16th. And so this is their one shot to get the council's approval of this, subject to the conditions that we've just talked about tonight, to get it open by the 20th. So, sorry, Greg, Your Honor.
No, that's fine. The original request was six to eight hours, is there something major that's changed, or is it, or their estimate, their estimate was off quite a bit?
Those of us that have a little bit more...
Experience? Years?
Experience, years, okay, I'll take that. I'm not going to say more than the contractor, but we also recognize that, you don't dig this deep of a trench, lay in pipe, get it backfilled, and one day, it's just not going to happen. And I think that the contractor has also, in conversations with him today, acknowledged that too.
Right.
But at one time, it was six to eight hours, you're right, Greg.
Is that from Hauser to the bypass on Mulberry?
No, no, that'll just be from steam, steam, where is it? Pass the way. To the bypass. Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Questions?
I have a question, will either lane be passable during that timeframe?
No, it will not. It's, when they go to cut the trench, they won't just cut half the road with that big of a trench and do the work, and then fill it in, and then cut the other trench to open up, no. So the road will be closed during that period.
Okay, Greg, how would you like to move on this?
Looking for a motion?
Simple motion and second.
I'll move that we approve the closure based on the proper paperwork.
Okay. All right. Phil makes the motion, Scott seconds. Is this a roll call?
No.
Voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Randy. We're down to item 15, which is other business. Is there any?
No. Move to the close.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Please adjourn. Thank you.
He's awful slow tonight, Osama.